Great, thank you Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And Mayor, thank you again for saying that as we go through these priorities tonight, we could frankly hold a work session on every single priority. Our goal really tonight is just to give you kind of a quick update of where we're at about seven months in since, uh, seven months since the priorities were adopted. After each section, if you have a very brief, quick, kind of yes or no, and kind of a question, you know, feel free, but anything else, please just send me an email and we'll make sure and get you a good detailed response. So tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to be going over an update on the 2021 council priorities. A couple of things, actually Aubrey, if you want to pull up the presentation. While she's doing that, I just want to call out Neha for doing such a great job on pretty short notice on some of these things. They had a great job putting this presentation together. It's a lot of information. Also Neha and some other staff from our information services department worked hard to create this new platform that I talked with several of you about in Tableau, which is a kind of a new software that we use in the city that helps us track all of our goals. So the screenshots that you see actually tonight are directly out of Tableau to give us an update. It put, you know, kind of a point in time of exactly where we're at on each goal. You'll notice that as we go through these goals, we've also identified sub-goals. That's kind of internal to this app to figure out how we can accomplish the overall council goal or priority. So you're going to see some of those sub-goals. We're going to talk about each of those sub-goals tonight as well. So Aubrey, if you can go to the next slide. So we'll go through the mid-year updates on the, on the priorities. We're then gonna, Raheem's gonna spend some time giving you a very quick update on the American Rescue Plan Act update as well. Shows them a lot, a lot of great work that's going on there. And then there's a few other city projects and strategies that we'll, we'll hopefully have time for at the end. Next slide. So I want to begin tonight talking about our police advancement review goals. So specifically talking about community engagement. On this, you'll notice that first off, this past week, we notified the council and the public that the city, the police department actually underwent a review from the OIR group. OIR submitted a new report that is now on our website where they went through and they did evaluation of use of force policies accountability system. And all of that is available on the city's police advancement review website. That was a good process to go through and identified a lot of areas that we can continue to improve on. Second, we are also in the process of starting a data availability project. This is an attempt to try to provide more statistics and data to the community in a transparent manner. If you go on there now, there's a lot of information. There's, there's department policies and statistics, but we want to take that even further. We did hire a new position that's going to be working on that. And we're hoping to actually use the new police advisory group that I'm going to talk about next to help us kind of formulate what that type of data and report is going to look like. And you'll see that coming up later this year and early next year on the city's website. Next slide. So speaking of the community advisory group, we just completed a recruitment. The recruitment was open until October 1st. Pleased to announce that we had 50 people apply for that, which we were very happy about, a very diverse group of individuals. We'll be spending the next several weeks in the police department, kind of with the police chief, working on identifying 10 individuals, seven that will be on the committee and three alternates. We're looking forward to going through that process and really appreciative of those that applied for that group. That group is going to help develop a framework and standard operating procedures for that advisory committee. So we're creating it from scratch. And we're hoping to have those appointments finalized within the next month or so. Next slide, Aubrey. And finally, under the police advancement review, we also talked about the use of force review board. This review board was actually, has been fairly complicated to work through, trying to figure out the correct part of the process to insert this type of a review board. And so knowing that we were going to do the OIR group report, we asked OIR to look at that for us and give us some recommendations. And so if you go into that report, there's an entire section dedicated to how they recommend we set that up. So we're going to take those recommendations and we're going to spend the next little while figuring out how to implement those recommendations within the Hillsborough Police Department. So that was very helpful and we appreciate their help on that as well. Next slide. That's a, that's a quick update on the police advancement review. Before I move on, is there any kind of quick questions about any of that?
Um, yeah, Robbie, how did you recruit?
Olivia, you cut out a little bit, but I think your question is how did we end up recruiting people for the advisory group?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we actually used pretty much every tool we have. We use all of our social media, use these city council meetings in my, in my, you know, city manager report. Tried to get as much word as we could. We had individual meetings. Our staff met with some of our community groups as well to talk about this. And so we think that paid off with 50, you know, 50 people applying. We were again, very encouraged by that. Okay, I'll move on to the economic development part. And these are not going to be necessarily in order that they're listed on the priorities. They're really more in order of, I have more to do with some of these Rahim and Simone. So that's how we're going to kind of couch these today. So we don't have to bounce around too much between the three presenters. So in economic development, there's a lot here. There's a lot going on, especially within this goal. And so one thing that's not listed on here necessarily is a lot of the work that we're doing up in the Hillsborough Technology Park. As you all know, we've spent the last couple of years and specifically this past year, working to acquire land that will allow us to advance infrastructure and industrial site readiness to support that, that important area. We've made a lot of progress in there. We've acquired a lot of land. You know that the next phase of Northeast Huffington Road is nearing completion. The project extends new transportation and water line to approximately 3,300 feet and brings sewer service to the entire Hillsborough Technology Park area. This park advances infrastructure service to 35 potential properties throughout the tech park. So we're very, very excited to get those, those projects completed. The city also acquired approximately 55 acres in the tech park over the past couple of years to deliver this infrastructure and two key economic development projects. The two public-private partnership projects include 275 jobs that were retained and at least 175 new jobs, 500,000 square feet of new industrial space and over $170 million in private investment. One of those projects was Hitachi High Tech. The other is a key semiconductor supplier facility. We're still working on some of the logistics there, so don't want to share their name quite yet, but very, two very successful projects. That's going to be a significant asset for the Hillsborough community into the future. Moving on, on this slide here up at the top, developing a community informed vision for 10th Avenue corridor. So as you all know, 10th Avenue has been a high priority for us this year as we've worked, tried, tried to work with those businesses. And we've had two guiding principles. One is to seek to preserve the character of the community by ensuring that the project concepts are driven by input from our Latinx community. And number two, paying close attention to the mitigating anti-displacement and gentrification in the process of revitalizing the corridor. That's going to be really important as we go through this to try to make sure we're supporting those businesses as we, as we make those improvements. Excited to announce that we are preparing to execute a contract with the multicultural collaborative, which is a community engagement firm led by Anita Yap to lead community engagement on this project. We will also be working with James Rojas, who is the founder of Place It. And he will support this project as a sub consultant. James utilizes creative methods, methods such as pop-ups and place it conversations. Some examples include weekend, mobile, brief engage, brief events to engage people where they are, such as grocery stores, laundromats, schools, community events, et cetera, to work through an interactive display using tactile materials or image boards that focus on design topics. Place it conversations are hands-on workshops to create models with blocks and other materials of favorite childhood memories about that place in order to understand people's core values. A mock place of conversation is going to be held coming up in the next couple of weeks so that city staff can understand how that experience will work with the public. We're also planning to do a robust engagement with the entire community along 10th Avenue. We're going to be looking at doing that in November and will follow up over the next three or four months with that information. And finally, we are also strengthening our partnership and collaboration with the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, who have been tremendous partners on this project as we continue to build those relationships with the businesses and residents along 10th Avenue. Going to the regional freight and workforce accessibility. The city is preparing to engage with Metro and in partnership with Washington County through an IGA for the West Side multimodal corridor study in the next couple of months. And also the Washington County Transit Study. So there's a lot more information that's going to be coming over the next few months as well on that. On the Oak and Baseline Study, that study aims to develop a unified vision and implementation strategy to guide improvements and redevelopment activity along that corridor. The goal is to enhance the access to and safety of all modes of transportation for residents, workers and visitors. As you all know, the Oak and Baseline Corridor is an interesting area because it's essentially a highway kind of going through Hillsborough. And it's, um, the goal is to move traffic through there, but we have to figure out a way to make it safe and to provide services for those businesses and making sure that we provide residents, cars, bikes, and all of those different avenues of transportation. There's going to be an online open house coming up from the city that's going to talk about these items. Our goal of that open house is going to be to introduce the project to gather public input about how to make the corridor more pleasant, improve safety, improve the image and functionality, gather interested people's emails or mailing address for future engagement and feedback on that corridor vision. We're also considering other forms of communication such as inserts in the utility bills and reader boards, city facilities. All communications will be in English and in Spanish. And as that 10th Avenue project kicks off, the intention is to bring input gathered from engagement on Oak and Baseline into the greater umbrella of what we're doing all along 10th Avenue as well. The next is the expansion of the storefront and tenant improvement programs. So Rahim is going to talk about this a little bit later as well. And when he talks about our ARPA updates. But just as a heads up, we currently have about $243,000 in this program. It's currently available citywide. It provides, I'm sorry, the storefront program is offered citywide. There is a maximum in both programs of up to $40,000. And with the storefront improvement grant, it's actually a dollar for dollar match that the city provides as well. We also offered funding for design assistance and helping people imagine what their storefronts can look like. The tenant improvement grant is specifically identified for eating and drinking establishment. And in that program, the city matches up to 70% of the funding. So looking forward to bolstering those efforts and working with businesses and how we can help them, especially right now as we continue to recover from COVID. Block 67, you have all seen that we've done a lot of outreach there and did a recent open house. We completed updates for both the residential market analysis and grocery market analysis for block 67. That analysis shows that unmet demand for housing in downtown Hillsborough is stronger than ever, which is not a surprise. Our active staff made a public online presentation for this project on September 16th. We sought community input through an online survey during the month of September. And we're pleased to report that we had over 1,100 responses to that survey. The project also received positive news coverage from the Portland Tribune, which linked to the survey as well. We are targeting mid to late October for a release of a new RFP. And we will convene an advisory committee to review the proposals and make a final selection around the beginning of next year. So very excited about the momentum that we have on block 67. And the downtown framework update, there's no update specifically today, but we will, that work is continuing to be informed by our work along the 10th Avenue corridor. Next slide, Aubrey. Before I go on to the workforce training, does anybody have any quick questions on that? That was a lot to throw at you all. If not, we'll keep going. Thank you. Workforce training and development. So there's a lot here as well that our economic development staff have been working on. First off, our apprenticeship and on the job training programs. We move forward with creating the only youth advanced manufacturing apprenticeship program in Oregon in partnership with HSD, PCC, BOLI, and the Higher Education Commission. That tentative program implementation date is in spring of 2022 and will likely be held at HSD facility. So we're excited about that program. Hillsborough also expanded the Hillsborough Works Program, which is a paid work experience program for youths aged 16 to 24. Summer of 2021 focused on supporting small businesses and prioritizing minority owned businesses and advancing, advancing the manufacturing sector. We also led the creation as the city of new, of two week, of a two-week AI program, which served 150 eighth grade students in the summer of 2021. The program was funded by HSD and the class was also led by employees from Intel. This program will hopefully be expanded to offer programming to high school students in the future. And finally, we continue to support manufacturing workforce partnerships. The city convenes the manufacturing workforce partnership monthly to collaborate and develop strategies to recruit new talent and upscale workforce in the advancement of the manufacturing sector. The partnership includes the city, 15 companies, the Hillsborough School District, PCC, and the Washington County Chamber of Commerce. Hosted virtual and drive-through career fairs and partnership with Prosperity dot and workforce, workforce Oregon have also been completed. And last thing that I'll share on this one is obviously we continue to work with PCC on the future connect program and the CTE career guidance programs. Entering its 10th year, we continue to support the first generation and low-income students with scholarships and college coaching. The CTE career guidance program had 15 students participate in the free two-credit advanced manufacturing CTE exploration course and internships with industry partners were offered as part of the Hillsborough Works Program. Again, that was a lot to throw out there, but there's a lot of work going on in workforce development and really proud of all of our staff in economic development for what they're working on with HSD and with the Chamber of Commerce specifically. That is all I have on the workforce development. Any questions specifically in workforce training? Okay, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Simone.
Thanks Robbie. So good to see all of you, council mayor. For the record, Assistant City Manager Simone Brooks. We've got a lot to cover in my slides, so there's a lot of new information for you. So our DEI competencies, starting with the, the hire of Steve Lee. So he's our DEI manager. He started July 9th and there's already a lot of work being done. He's developed a framework for a workforce equity strategic plan, which will help us identify the competencies we need to create a racial equity culture within the organization. An interdepartmental planning team, which will be co-chaired by Steve and by HR will launch in January. There will likely be several subcommittees that will address organizational culture, data, policies, et cetera. The first input into the plan is a race and equity survey that'll be distributed to employees in mid to late January and will be open for two weeks. The survey will be administered by PSU to maintain anonymity for our employees. And PSU will tabulate the responses and provide those back to us. Workforce demographics analysis and other data points related to employment experience also will be part of the strategic planning process. The plan will look at recruitment, selection, engagement, promotion, retention, and just generally the employee experience. An HR policy review will also be conducted. One was previously conducted and we will be building upon that both citywide policies as well as departmental practices and policies, looking at those from an equity perspective. And then this will be combined with a best practices review. There's a lot of good learning and a lot of good policies that exist in other jurisdictions and we hope to learn from them. We, in terms of our foundational equity training, we had that live, live equity training, not in person, but live equity foundational equity training that was a mandatory training for all employees was administered January through June of this year. At the end of the summer, the, the city brought on NeoGov Learn, which allows us to use videos to train folks. And people can sign up at various times to make it more convenient to have training. So we have uploaded one of the trainings to NeoGov Learn to make that available to all staff. Since we have about 950 employees who have completed the training, but all new employees are required to complete it. And we are trying to make our way through the rest of the workforce. There will be an opportunity to build on the training. Once we have a better idea of kind of where we stand in terms of race and equity and understanding of our policies and practices and where we want to head in the future, and that will come out of the survey results. In terms of DEI training for our senior leadership team, the senior leadership team did take the foundational equity training prior to it being released to all employees. So they were ahead of the game. The DEI manager Steve Lee is also preparing a training for our senior leadership team, which includes division directors as well as department, departmental directors and the executive staff helping to prepare them for, for sending out the survey, how to support staff as they take the survey, and then how to help them engage once we have the survey results back. And that will be rolling out in November and December of this year. City Council, each of you had an opportunity to speak with Steve. Steve, he will be providing some, some work around some focus areas, which are workforce, workforce supplier diversity, leadership development and community engagement. He, what he also heard from a lot of you and what we already knew was that there is an interest in developing skills around policy implementation and policy development. And so we'll be actively looking at how to go about doing that, helping to provide an equity perspective. In terms of boards and commissions, there is a DEI training incorporated into the orientation for board and commission members. There are actually 72 spots for boards and commissions. So we are encouraging people to make their way through that. And that video is available on the website. Next slide. And any questions before I move on to recruitment barriers?
I have a question.
Yes.
I appreciate the report. I'm wondering what impact from the time that this work has started? What impact this work has had on city work environments? Practices? Best practices, how conversations happen around DEI?
Well, the, I think the condensed version is that the workforce diversity strategic plan is, has just come about. So Steve has only been on since July. So all of the, most of the efforts I described are, are in the works and are in development. As you probably know, our human resources department is down about a third. So we are, we are trying not to overtax them, but also keep them moving in the right direction to help support organizational culture and our employees of color in particular. So the, the work continues. I'm not sure if I answered your questions.
Can you share maybe the response that staff are having in, in going to DEI trainings? I just want to get an understanding of, we spent this much time doing this. We're still going down this freeway for DEI. I just want to get a grip on like, where are we? What have we learned so far? What has changed?
Yeah, I think that's the purpose of the race and equity survey is to really gauge now that we have done a training is to assess where, where are we now that we've provided some, some basic foundational knowledge? So that we can measure again in two years so that the work that we've done, we have a sense of where, what, how much progress we've been able to make. So we don't yet have a baseline for that. So this is part of the process of developing that.
I don't want to spoil the end of the story, but do you have outcomes that you're? I don't know if you can expect them, but do you have outcomes that you're looking at of where you want the organization to get to?
I think that's probably a longer conversation that we, we may have here, but I would be happy to follow up with you after, after the work session, if that would be helpful. I'm happy to either have a conversation or provide you with some connection with Steve and myself. And I can provide some additional information.
You can provide a follow-up. I'm sure the rest of council would like to know this information as well, not just me.
Certainly, we're happy to do that. Okay. All right, recruitment barriers. Thank you, counselor. I'll care. So the first is our public service fellowship. So this is one of the initiatives that we identified with the recruitment and selection strategic equity plan. Historically, the, the fellowship required that someone be part of the youth advisory council. And that experience meant that the candidate pool was narrowed. So the qualification criteria for this position was, were expanded to include the graduates of the JTOP program in a, in a, as well as former city interns in the hope that we can continue to diversify the pool that we have in the fellowship program. So the city actually hired Henry Cruz as the city's public service fellow. This year, Henry was a former intern with the city and will be doing rotations in the community development department as well as on the communications division. And as I indicated, the, the word, the goal of the expanded criteria is really to diversify that fellowship and who's able to participate. Bias awareness, so equity and recruitment for interview panelists. Training launched in early 2021, which was ahead of schedule. The training is required for anyone who serves as a panelist in an interview and they are required to retake the training annually. The training covers bias and interview processes and tools to mitigate bias. It has been completed by 315 staff and seven external partners who have helped the city conduct interviews. The equity pause, this process is being refined and will be informed by the policy work that's part of the workforce diversity strategic planning. The intention is to better understand the demographics of our applicant pools and how the composite, composition of the pools evolves as the selection process moves forward so that we can attempt to identify any barriers that might exist. We will also be reviewing our pre-employment screening process. Again, this is part of the work of the workforce diversity strategic planning process and that policy review and looking at best practices to again, identify if we are inadvertently creating any barriers to participation in our workforce. As a final note, that is not included on this slide. We have developed employee affinity groups, or I shouldn't say we developed, our staff developed employee affinity groups. And we, I include that in this part, even though it says recruitment barriers. I think it will help aid us in our recruitment processes as, as people recognize that there is a culture that is trying to be as inclusive and supportive as, as possible.
I have a question, Simone.
Okay.
When I worked at PSU, we were looking at jobs and descriptions and what they required. And talked about whether or not some of those would have turned off potential candidates because they look like impossible jobs. And also talked to PSU at the time, I was on the Diversity Action Council. We talked with PSU about advertising in local community newspapers like the Scanner, Asian Reporter, El Programa Hispanic, to try to reach out to more people. And then consider whether the wording on the job description might be tailored in a way to be more inclusive. So those are the things that PSU was looking at. And I'm wondering if those are things that the city is also looking at.
Yes.
Or could potentially look at.
Yes, and that work actually began before I arrived at the city. So it's an evolving process. We're always learning.
That's good because also priorities is increase the number of not just POC, but Latinx and BIPOC people working at the city. And I, I am curious at upper management as well, rising above from mid to upper management. So I know that we talked about those things, but those are the things that I wanted to say in, in relation to recruitment.
Thank you. And there will be a, a work session later on this month that Steve Lee will be presenting. And he'll be talking about workforce demographics at that time. So you'll have some additional information then and opportunities to kind of dig in a little bit deeper and ask questions, I think. Okay, moving past recruitment barriers or removing recruitment barriers, I have to work on our titles. And so to supplier diversity, thank you. So after a very competitive recruitment process, Danny Murato was selected as the final candidate for our supplier diversity program administrator. He joined the city in mid-September and will be focused on conducting outreach and engagement on the city's developing supplier diversity program. An interdepartmental work group is being convened to review and discuss procurement strategies involved in the supplier diversity programs. And the work group has representation from all city departments. The first kickoff meeting is actually this Thursday. Staff plan to continue developing the supplier diversity program and policy, which will be informed by industry best practices and input from stakeholders. Staff will present a draft policy to city council sometime in early 22. Staff have already begun the process of establishing membership in advocacy groups such as the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs, the National Association of Minority Contractors, Portland Business Development Group and Latino Built. And they will continue to engage with local organizations. And they will continue to engage with local organizations as well and the small business community and represent at trade shows, forums, and other networking events. Any questions? Okay, I'll keep moving along then. Let's, we'll switch gears and yet still stay in the same place. We'll move to community engagement. Great, thank you. So our Community Engagement Manager recruitment has just closed. We do have a offer out to a final candidate out of a field of a hundred and eight. So it was a really strong field. We are excited about the hire and we are looking at a late October likely start date. So I look forward to telling you more about that in the future. In partnership with our DEI manager, the Community Engagement Manager will lead a citywide internal workforce to begin formulating a strategic engagement framework. As you can see, we have, one of the goals was a communications translation policy. But what we really want to refine this to is a language access policy. Translation is just one component of that. It's actually much broader. And the equity team has been discussing this and there is a desire to engage community on a draft policy. So we'll have more information about that moving forward, but it will be a key element of the community engagement framework. The last piece was the Community Engagement and Land Use Planning, as all of you already know. So sorry about that. The city was awarded a Metro 2040 Planning and Development Ground as well as other funding to meaningfully involve Hillsborough historically marginalized communities to center their voices in the city's land use planning processes. The result is a finalized public communications and engagement plan, which was the culmination of multiple communications with city departments and staff, the city equity team over the course of two months, project advisory panel members and community-based organizations. Yeah, okay. Moving, any, I'm sorry, any questions before I move on? Yes, okay. Moving on, housing and homelessness. So another hire, very exciting. So Mandy Boff joined us at the end of June as the Community Services Program Coordinator, focused on our homelessness initiatives. She previously worked at Yam Hill Community Action, so she was actually a service provider. So brings a unique lens to us. Another cross-departmental work group being formed, this one to assist with addressing homelessness initiatives. This will be developed this fall and we are currently working on the roster, scope and structure of that. There have been some transitions in terms of the various boards. Just so you know, the SHS Local Implementation Plan had a committee that has transitioned off. There is now what's called H-PAC, Hillsborough Plan Advisory Committee. That is, the city does not have a role on that committee. So we are trying to figure out how to plug into, in at that level. There is a council person who I believe is from Forest Grove, who is a representative there, but we're trying to figure, we're trying to determine how best to plug in. Next slide, please. Okay, capital investments. So potential shelter properties and investments, we know that there is a gap in the number of beds available in the county for people experiencing homelessness. And we know that a year-round shelter can help support that and the SHS measure funding is, lends itself towards that type of support. The city will select and purchase a site and that either is a shelter or will convert to a shelter and will work with the county to select the shelter operator, which the county will fund. At least that's, that's certainly the intent. If we're able, if we're going to be able to move forward, the county seeks a shelter model which operates twenty-four hours a day and is available to adults as opposed to other, other subgroups of our unhoused community. We have explored and considered various sites and plan to come before council on December seventh to introduce a site, share preliminary thoughts and present a community engagement strategy. The engagement strategy will be informed by data that we have collected and are collecting through our homeless survey. We currently, we have more than seven hundred and twenty responses to that survey, which closes October eleventh. So I encourage you to continue to distribute that either on your social media or via email. We're getting a lot of good information and some diverse, we're looking at the demographics as well so that we can try to pinpoint how else to best reach folks. In terms of, yes.
Question, sorry. When we doing out, we're doing a survey of homeless of Hillsborough. Is, does it matter if they're on county property or are we just serving homeless in Hillsborough?
I'm sorry, I, I should have used different language. So it is a homelessness survey. So while unhoused community members may be responding to the survey, the survey isn't for, limited to unhoused community members. So it, it's for the broader community. It's, it's all-inclusive in terms of the community being asked to respond. Does that help?
Yeah, and so if homeless respond to the survey, does it matter if they're on county property or are we just looking across Hillsborough for homeless people who want to respond to the survey?
We are looking for, for people who are unhoused because they're bringing their unique lived experience. And as we know, our homeless are, are transient. They, they establish where, where their home is and that may, that's not always in one spot for any length of time. Examples of camps moving when, when the water levels rise, they may move to a different area of the county and then they may come back when it's drier. So. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. In terms of working with the county, as we move there forward with the shelter, we would need to create some type of agreement with the county. We don't know what that contract or IGA or MOU would need to look at in order to establish funding for the shelter operator. And we'll have more information about that as we move along in the process. In terms of our city sanctioned camping, the Wood Street Sanction Camp opened July eighth and was operated to provide safe and alternative shelter to up to thirty individuals every night. It has served a positive and alternative source. Our police department has been very supportive and appreciated the option for, for folks that otherwise were in other areas of the city. It's also assisted code compliance, nonprofit outreach teams and allowed them to really direct people towards a specific location. It has been operating at a hundred percent capacity for the past two months. The site is scheduled to close November fifteenth. It was timed to coincide with the opening of the county's winter, winter shelter program. However, Project Homeless Connect is working with the Salvation Army to open a shelter and at the old Salvation Army building and that is scheduled to open, I believe, October. Oh gosh, it's the fifth, October eighth, I believe. And so with that gave us an opportunity to transition folks from the Wood Street location where it is definitely wet and cold. Transition them to an indoor location. So we are actively working on that both internally and communicating that out to our community. And that is all I have. Any questions? Okay, I think Raheem.
Quick comment. This is councillor Van Beveren. I know that Washington County has sold that property that was the location of one of the encampments. Is that correct? And, and if so, where are those people headed?
The property, I believe, is in due diligence at this point in time. I believe they're anticipating the sale being finalized in December, but again, it's in due diligence. I, I can't speak to where those individuals will go. We are actively talking to the county on pretty much a daily basis about various homelessness initiatives and recognize that sheltering is the next step. As they work to get housing navigation and get the help people into houses, there, there's not enough housing to get people into right away and not all folks are ready to make that transition. So we continue to work with them on alternative options.
Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Okay, Raheem, I think you're next.
And Raheem or Robbie, how many more segments, if you will, do we have?
We have two or three more council goals. What we may do, mayor, is the last part of this is an ARPA update that we kind of tacked on to the end. If we don't have time for that, we can bring that forward in a future work session. That one's not time-sensitive. So we were just going to see how, how quickly we get through these next few. And then if we need to change that last part, we can do those in, maybe in a couple of weeks.
Very good, thank you. I want to make sure that we give Raheem and Neha their time.
And to clarify, I know, I know we listed Neha. She actually was, she was the brains behind all of this, putting it together, but she won't be presenting tonight. So Raheem will be our last presenter.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And for the record, Raheem Harji, one of the assistant city managers, and I'll try to go through these quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. So under the housing development portion, we have Century Commons, which is our partnership project with Habitat for Eighteen Affordable Town Homes. I received its land use approval earlier this year in spring and I believe the council saw that when it came to them. We're working on some property line adjustments right now and we should be getting our development agreement and property conveyance all squared away by the end of November. The second thing in this category is a policy and code review to see if there are things that we can change, put in place, remove to support more affordable housing development. So our team right now is working on a, putting together a scope of work with Eco Northwest for a policy and code update study. We're planning to finalize what that scope would look like by the end of this year to get the work started. The first phase will focus on evaluating the financial gaps and any incentive and displacement policies that exist. And then the second phase of that work will focus more on the code review. Next slide, please. So the, the next thing under housing and homelessness, one of the big things that our team is working on right now is House Bill Two Thousand and One and exploring middle housing opportunities. You've got some updates in the past on House Bill Two Thousand and One and you will be receiving some more in the future. But our staff have been working on refining code language and there have been other things that have popped up along the way. For example, Senate Bill Five Forty-eight, which requires jurisdictions to allow the division of middle housing into individual ownership blocks, which wasn't the case before. Senate Bill Eight, which authorizes development of affordable housing projects on non-residential lands. So there's a lot of other stuff that has come up that they're trying to make sure that is incorporated into our court amendments related to House Bill Two Thousand and One. And our plan is to adopt all of these changes no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Along with that, there's also a robust community engagement that was going on. We wrapped that work up in twenty twenty, in July twenty twenty-one. We established, we've established a website. We've done some community surveys. There've been some articles in city views. And we've developed some concepts of what codes could look like. Under the Witch Hazel Commu-, Witch Hazel South Community Plan, we're still on track to adopt our comprehend, a community plan by June of twenty twenty-two. We started the community planning process in spring of twenty twenty-one. How the community meeting did some inventory of our natural resources within the area. We'll be holding a couple more community meetings and working towards that target date for adoption. Any questions? Keep moving, next slide. Under our affordable housing section, focused on the metro affordable housing bond and other opportunities. So New Ever Esperanza, you will see something later on in this evening at council, at our council regular meeting. So our land use approval will be before you later tonight. We will then be working on our development agreement and funding agreement and we should have that in place by December twenty twenty-one. And then final closeout and construction would start in January of twenty twenty-two. We are also working on looking at some other opportunities for other sites to build some more affordable housing units. And we're currently submitted two letter of intents. So more to come on that in the future. Any questions? Next slide, please.
Raheem, one quick question. Sorry, I'm, I'm wondering would those be using the metro affordable housing dollars for those two other sites that you mentioned? And do you know about how much of that is left?
So I don't have the answer with me right now, councillor, but I can get that for you. And I think it would be a combination of the metro funds, but also some other funds as well, because a lot of our units are going to be achieved by the New Ever Esperanza project. So I'll get some more info for you and get it to the council.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll jump to highlight real quick. So you will get some more information in November when we come to you in the work session. But essentially, we, as of yesterday, we had about a hundred and eighteen customers onboard. And our fiber hut on Davis Road continues to be constructed and it should be functioning and up and running by the end of December. Next slide, please. Next slide. Awesome, thank you. We're working on a couple of acceleration models and you will see that information on November second at the work session. Next slide. So under environmental sustainability, and I hope I do Peterson justice in updating this. The home energy score, as you all know, is in effect as of September first. Most of the feedback we've got after its adoption has been positive. We've established a partnership with Community Energy Product, Project and Community Action to provide both the home energy score and also provide an incentive for, for efficient heat pump water heaters to income-qualified families. The other update in this particular area is Senate Bill Five Eighty-two, which basically changes how materials will be managed and shifting the cost to the, away from the cost, from the community, more towards the producer of the material. Under the Natural Resources Programs, so the second one and then second one you see on that list. Essentially, we've been working with internal team to put together a scope of work with Portland State's Uni-, Portland State University Center for Public Service to do an assessment on how we manage our natural resources and how may we optimize things across departments. So we had our first kickoff meeting with Portland State staff and all of our departments last week on Friday. Essentially, the first step will be assessing what we do right now, comparing it to what the minimum regulatory requirements are, comparing what we do to other similar sized cities. And then at the end of it, with some suggestions of what we can do as well. And then under the solar power installation, no significant update at this time. Next slide. So a lot of this will cover under the ARPA update, but I can do a quick time check, Robbie. Do you want to defer the ARPA update to a future meeting or try to tackle that today?
No, I, I think we'll need to defer it just to give it enough time. So I would suggest, well, we'll find a time in the next few different council meetings to spend a little more time on the ARPA update.
So a lot of the work under COVID recovery is in the ARPA update. So with the exception of just a quick update on our CDBGCV funds. So far, we've provided three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to Community Action for rental assistance. But as you know, Community Action has been receiving a lot of funds from a lot of different agencies to support rent assistance, utility assistance, a whole bunch of other things. So we do, we received one point one million in CDBGCV funds that we could spend all the way up to twenty twenty-six. So we are holding on to the rest of those funds just to see what other areas we may need to invest in after some of those other programs have been stood up. And that is the update for, under our response and recovery. And we could go to the next slide. This will cover this particular portion under the ARPA update. And Robbie, do you want me to cover the last slide in the presentation?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So a couple of other things that we're working on, which we thought would be good to mention to, to the council today is three major initiatives that are organizational work. There, there are multiple departments that are involved in this work. And it's intended to build a stronger foundation on what we're doing already. We're doing some amazing work and these are the things, this type of work will just help us grow in the future. Um, for all of these three initiatives, we're using external uh, consultants to provide this expertise in developing strategies and some plans. Um, and using the internal staff to basically uh, provide what are we doing today and what would they like to see in the future. Um, the asset management and records management uh, strategic plans follow a very similar path. They start off with understanding how, wha- what are we doing today? How mature are we? Uh, based on industry-specific standards. So for example, with the Asset Management Strategic Plan, there's an ISO standard, which is ISO fifty-five thousand. Um, how are we doing i- in relation to that industry standard? And then they, uh, we would develop a roadmap of the specific strategies and objectives so that we have something that we can actually implement. Um, those things will be um, vetted through a whole internal team. And each of these projects will have, or each of these roadmap elements will have a description of the work, the outcome, the timeline we should implement it in, and um, basically giving us more of a strategic approach to addressing these two things long-term. Under the CIP, uh, Strategic Planning and Process Improvements, this is just looking at how are we doing all the stuff around capital projects, like community engagement. How are we assigning resources? How are we incorporating equity into our project prioritization? How are we um, building things, planning for things, and uh, some financial strategies to do that? Uh, there's a lot of work here, but I'll stop there and uh, turn it over back to Robbie.
Thanks, Rahim. Um, so as you all, Aubrey, we can go ahead and take the the presentation down. We knew it was a bit optimistic throwing this much information, right, into one, into one uh, uh, PowerPoint and one work session. I think it just goes to show a couple of things. One is, we're making tremendous progress on the goals. We wanted to make sure to highlight that. Two is, there is a lot going on. It is a lot of work. Um, and three, you heard us say multiple times that there's gonna be a work session coming up. We have work sessions set up for several of these things where we can really dig deeper and dive into some of these things that uh, that we, that we just kind of touched on the surface tonight. So we're encouraged by the progress that's being made, uh, really grateful for staff and how hard they're working right now. And I'm glad Rahim included that last slide because aside from the council priorities that we're working on, we're just, we also have the day-to-day operations of the city that keeps, you know, staff extremely busy as well. So um, sorry that it was so quick, uh, and 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 uh, a lot of information in there, but we do have just one more minute if anybody has one last question. And I'm also, also happy to take phone calls or emails if you guys want to dig into it deeper into anything that we talked about tonight.